She's on her way in. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order since we have a quorum. Welcome to the highest attending board of this evening. So, let's see. It says public comment, but we switched the order. The first thing we're gonna do is approve the meeting minutes from the... Because I only have two, it probably doesn't matter. I thought I'd have twenty or something from the last two meetings. So, any comments on... So I think we'll take up the meeting minutes from November 16.
September 16. So I do have a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Just reflecting on the meeting that we had with council, the dinner meeting before that, I would just like the summary notes to reflect some of the topics we discussed about, discussed and some of the feedback that we provided, which I just think was very positive for the year and, yep. I just think it's important that we document that.
Can you be, Tom? But yeah.
Okay, we didn't record that part of the evening. We can provide some notes. Okay, yes. I just wanted to insert some of that because I think it's very relevant to our connection with them and the work that we've been doing. That's it.
Okay, so let's... We'll not approve that one this week and we'll push it. We'll add that to the different ones. And then...
So I move approval of the October 14th meeting minutes.
Second.
Anyone have comments on the October 14th meeting minutes? They're pretty stupid, I believe. Okay, hearing no comments. I'm gonna... Everyone in favor of approving the meeting minutes from October 14th? Yeah, I?
Hi.
Fine.
Bye.
Any opposed? No, okay. So those are the meeting minutes. Yeah, we have two speakers on... You signed up for a public comment. So I think the first one is Anna. Is anyone online? We should have asked. Also want to speak in public comment. If so, put it in the chat and Celia will get your name down. But, uh, sorry. Public comment, you get three minutes to speak. And the first person I have is Anna Sparland.
Where do you want me to just say?
Why don't you come up to the front? We have this little screen here, but I think, you know, come up because there's two members online. Yeah, that's good right there.
Okay, so hello, my name is Anna Sparland. I live at 9422 Highland Place. In terms of interest groups, I do work for another public library system along the Front Range, which has unionized with APG. But I'm also a card-carrying patron of the Boulder Public Library since 2013. I remember when the building we're standing in was renovated and expanded. I've utilized your café on the walkway, seen art shows in the gallery space, taken classes at Building 61, and I've gone to community events hosted here in the meeting rooms you guys provide. And so as a fellow library worker and a patron to your system, I'm here to support your staff tonight and asking the board to pass the resolution presented to you that would give your staff voluntary recognition for collective bargaining rights. Boulder Public Library will only be approved for it. A unionized workplace is a competitive advantage in recruitment because especially at this time, workers are looking for stability. We are looking for job security, for employee protections to either prevent layoffs or lessen their severity, for rule of order that allows employees to focus on doing our jobs well instead of having to hope that we personally get along with our supervisor fine and that the standards of the job do not change depending on who our bosses. Along with stability, unionization sets you apart as a workplace where innovation and problem solving can happen. By unionizing, the commitment is created for leaders to work with their employees to come to agreement on conditions of work, but beyond that, as partners, to solve problems on the day-to-day. A unionized workplace has made clear that leaders value the expertise of their staff and welcome ideas for improved services and outcomes. Boulder Public Library is already doing an incredible job with serving its community and its students. And as a patron of this library system, I'm excited to see what is in store in the future where Boulder Public Library is working hand-in-hand with its employees to have better working conditions and even better library services as a result. Once again, I ask that tonight you pass the resolution giving your staff voluntary recognition for their union. Thank you for your time and your work.
Tom and Celia, you can hear us. Everybody online? Okay. Great. The next person I have is Tyler Shankle.
That is correct.
Come on up.
All right, hello. My name is Tyler Shankle. I live at 4855 Edison Avenue here in Boulder. And I am a colleague of Anna's, working at Jefferson County Public Library, also in the APG. And I wanted to speak today as a resident of Boulder and someone who attends this library as like my primary local library. And I want to... When I engage in public services and I want to make sure that the public servants have a say and a voice and are empowered and that the services that I could advantage up and benefit from are not coming at their expense or their sacrifice. The library is providing such a unique and essential service. It would break my heart if it wasn't also empowering and joyful and to the interests and benefit of those, making those services possible. And especially as someone who's seen firsthand what all the commensurate benefits, protections and just being able to have a voice that union provides, it's... I just want to encourage everyone here to vote to give that recognition, that empowerment that your library staff deserves and to make sure that that interests their interests, their voices and passion is actually recognized and defended. So, thank you.
Okay, so the next is... Do you have slides or...? Okay. Next is the presentation from Christine Burke.
Yeah.
And can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Jessica Villarreal Puentez and I'm a acquisition specialist in the collection and services department. Good evening. I have the last word of the news at this time. Two weeks ago, we publicly announced our intent to form a union and we began signing union membership cards. The response has been overwhelming. Stanford, all branches and in every department have voiced their excitement and the broader Boulder community has made it clear that they support the union at our library. But this process began long before that. Discussion about unionizing began before we even left the city. This was something employees have always been thinking about. From our experience with a union contract, we knew we wanted a union to protect us going forward too. During preliminary talks about forming a district, the board attended a staff chat in 2023 where questions arose regarding library employees losing their eligibility with the MDA and the protections the contract provided. That day, we received sound advice about our legal right to form a union. Former president Johnny Teeter even told us an anecdote that she was once an officer of a union with APG when she worked for the federal government. She said she wouldn't recommend APG for staff and that APG would make more sense. Since then, staff at the libraries have been working towards us for months or even years. Within a week of going public earlier this month, the majority of workers had signed their union membership cards. Today, our numbers indicate 62% of all staff, including subs, have signed their cards. We hope that you can see the indomitable sphere of the staff and that you will support us in making the hope of forming our unions a reality. Based on the clearly demonstrated support from the majority of employees, we request that the board voluntarily recognize our union and join us as we reestablish the union contract protections that we previously had. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christine Burke. I work here as volunteer coordinator. I've been here nearly six years. And first, I just want to thank each of you for volunteering your time because I know you are volunteers. Like Jess said, the response of a union has been extremely positive from staff and community alike. So now alongside our request for voluntary recognition for a union, we are also requesting that the board adopt a policy, which I shared with Doug last week on October 20... On October 14th, that establishes mutually agreed-upon rules for how this process takes place. Our goal isn't to change how the library operates on a daily basis or to create rules that disempower the board or administration. Rather, this is a procedure for how to establish a union that is fair for both employer and employee. That way, going forward, we can operate with a clear understanding of what the process is. This policy that we sent you doesn't reinvent the wheel. It is modeled on similar policies in other local governments, libraries and public employers across the country, including here in Colorado. It has been designed by professionals who have decades of experience in collective bargaining and it is at its core a simple, straightforward and democratic process. It covers how the district may recognize a union and some ground, basic ground rules for what can and cannot be covered in a collective bargaining agreement. Again, the processes proposed here are as basic and straightforward as a public sector collective bargaining gets. This policy creates a clear process to bargain a union contract, something we as library workers very recently had, like Jess said, prior to the establishment of the district. We served our community well then and we will serve our community even better should the board choose to adopt this policy. We hope you all agree that having the right to collectively bargain is something every worker should have the right to choose to do, especially in a library like ours that values democracy and openness. Still, even if you feel differently, we hope that you can see that having a clearly outlined and fair process will ultimately benefit everyone, whether you are in management or staff and whether you support our union or not. I have copies of the policy for all of you to review. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I am Samuel Goodwin. I am one of the theater coordinators right across the hall. And I was asked to write why I won't in union. So, this is... What did I say about that? All right, so this is the best job I've ever had, by far. Just no contest, not at all. I'm not from the private sector film industry. It's terrible. This is amazing. But let me tell you about my second best job. So I was a producer at a small production studio down in Lanta, Georgia. I came on to the company in its first year and I worked side-by-side with the then-president of that company to build it from the ground up. She was a close friend of mine. She's still a close friend of mine now. She was a great collaborator, a really caring manager, and she really reminds me a lot of the staff and the management here. I use past tense "was" because one day, the owner of this company decided to give his son a job as co-president. We had no say in this, neither she nor any of the other employees. And over about a course of a year, he harassed my friend, the existing president, into leaving the job. And after she quit, he was left solely in charge and he cut our benefits and gave himself a massive pay raise. In fact, I found out that he was embezzling money from the company. And when I confronted the owner about this, I was laid off. You know, they said I was not will employee. This is during COVID, nothing to do with that. But you know, this was right after I came with his concerns. I'm still in debt from that layoff. And my heart will break for a company I helped start that I really loved. And quite frankly, I'll fight tooth and nail to make sure that never happens again.
Yes.
Any say that I can have in the matter against that, I will take. And a union is a way to have that say. Because of the library, I really am treated better. I'm treated better than I ever was at that company. I love this job. I believe exponentially more strongly in building a community resource in the theater than I do in directing Porsche commercials. And I have pension. It's... I didn't know pensions existed. It's crazy. But you know, one day, like at my old job, that could change. All of you guys could win the lottery and stop being the board. Same with that great management. And you know, I don't think someone's son is gonna be put in charge. I just don't want to be at the mercy of that again. And that's why I'm supporting this union. Because a union means stability, security, and it gives me a voice no matter who may be in charge. And as much as I love this job, that isn't something I have right now. And a union gives me that proper say. Unions also have a lot of other benefits. You're more likely to vote when you're in a union. You have much stronger political organizing for, you know, broader causes. People have longer lives in unions. They have more friends. They have mutual aid. I, you know, I work in the theater. I'm very, very isolated in my own small department. And just through the beginning of these organizing meetings, I have so many more friends who I get drinks with, who I talk to. It's great. It's been a great way for me to meet and understand so much more about the library profession. And you know, also right now, I'll say, as we're seeing worker rights being stripped away broadly and we're seeing a lot less democratic say in our government, a union is a really tremendous way to have a little bit more security. Workers at this library used to have this security, as was addressed. And as the district grows and changes, we want to make sure that we have a say in how this place is run. I'm not taking part in this to try to wring money out of an institution that may or may not have a despair, but I am taking the part in this to have solidarity, to have security and to have a seat at the table at the institution that I love. Thank you.
This is amazing. Hello, my name is Michael Serrano. My current title at DPLD is custodian lead. I started working at the Boulder Public Library in August of 2022. And I believe public libraries are vital institutions. I also believe that the workers provide the services that make this vital public institution function. Everyday people working with the public behind the scenes should have the same rights as city of Boulder municipal workers, as city of Boulder police officers, as city of Boulder firefighters, as educators, as grocery workers, rights all workers should have, rights we as library workers used to have. When I started the library, not only was I looking to be a part of a vital institution in our community, but I chose to stop because we had a union and a contract to back us. It didn't take long before I actually saw the benefits of having a union behind me. And in late 2022, the main library was closed due to drug contamination in the bathrooms. I was one of the daytime facility workers tasked with keeping these bathrooms clean and operational on a daily basis. In a December 20th, 2022 article, a Dana Cameron reported that there were about 15 reports of people smoking in the library restrooms in the past month. During that time, there had been two incidents where city employees were evaluated by paramedics and experiencing symptoms consistent with a potential exposure to meth residue or fumes going into the restroom. I was one of those city employees. Not reported was I was also taken to the Boulder Community Health Foothills Hospital. It was after this incident that I had concerns about the safety of the workers and the public at the library. I made sure to report every incident where I smelled the same drug smell as when I was hospitalized. At one point, I was told that not even police could identify drugs by smells, so I couldn't be sure what I was smelling. It wasn't until I asked about getting a union involved that we were actually getting procedures and PPE for such events. Now, in 2025, the roles have evolved and staff has expanded. The job really hasn't changed. We still provide vital services and the conditions can still be unsafe. But has changed is that I no longer have a union to back me up when and if something goes wrong. When the library became a district, we went from having a union and a contract to being at-will employees that could be terminated without just cause and to having benefits that could be modified or removed at any time. While the change to a district has been positive in many ways for the library, the loss of union protection cannot be glossed over or ignored. It was a significant step backwards for our library. While libraries in Denver and Jefferson County are gaining union protections, we lost them. That should be concerning for any member of the board looking to maintain Boulder Public Library as a competitive employer and a model of public service in Colorado. One might say, but this board administration have the best interests of our employees in mind in all our decisions, and that's great. But can we be sure of that for all future decisions? Can we be sure of that for all future boards? And you must ask yourself, how much of that is a result of a culture developed why employees had union protections? After all, how can we have a culture of mutual respect and trust when our employment status is unprotected and our voices can't be heard? So if asked, what is it we want? We want a union and collective bargaining rights. We want job security. We want a voice in the workplace. We want the protections necessary to continue to serve our public extraordinarily. We are in a national landscape where public services and the workers who provide them are under attack. You all have an opportunity to do your part to fight against that tide. Right now, as we stand before you, united, we ask the board to think globally by acting locally by recognizing our union and granting collective bargaining rights. Thank you.
Anyone on...? Anyone else? Anyone online?
There is a comment from Eleanor Leans.
Okay, sure.
I've been a Boulder resident since 1983 and I've had a library card since 1984. Boulder libraries are a hugely valuable part of our city. Please treat librarians like the professionals they are. Recognize this union. Thank you, Eleanor Leans.
Is that it? Anyone have any comments or any...? Thank you. Thanks for your support and showing up and thanks for all the work you do as staff. I really appreciate it. I'm a library patron myself, so, you know, you guys have been working on this for a long time and the board just got the memo two weeks ago. And so we're studying, you know, what it means for the library board? How does it fit within Colorado law? Obviously, Colorado protects your rights to create a union. It protects your rights to engage in concerted activity and that's not something we can prevent. So we are, you know, looking into it. We're gonna later on this evening talk about, you know, scheduling time to consider the memo that you sent. I'm assuming this, you know, we can come back with comments on this? Is that on this document that you provided?
Yeah, questions that you have, for sure.
Any questions? You know, we may have to form a little subcommittee of board members to open dialogue with you all and figure out, you know, how this fits within the, within the board. So, thank you. I would probably won't vote on this tonight. We're not gonna vote on this tonight, I don't think, unless somebody calls it up. But we are gonna look at it. We, our biggest pressure right now is like I, when I met with you so far, I said, we have to pass the budget. That's one thing we're required to do by law. And so, while it won't be, while it's disappointing that, you know, we won't be making a decision on this tonight, we're gonna put together a plan to get back with you and begin the discussion to see what that means.
Who's the appropriate point of contact on your end? We might have further questions or need to talk about any things in the memo, just a minute.
We have an entire organizing committee. We have a dedicated person. I've been emailing with Doug, so I can share a couple larger teams.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, so that's this portion of the meeting. We're gonna move on to the next one. You're welcome to stay. You can go. We're gonna be talking about... We're not giving you the communications and marketing plan. The next piece is the IT cost reduction plan.
That's me. I hope everybody had a chance to read the menu. Memo. The menu is tied. So this is simply a plan for a transition around the IT contractor. As you all know, the current contract which we signed two years ago with Districts of Focus Connect. It has, you know, partly it has to do with the pricing of that contract. I think we've had some hurdles both way. The cost has gone up exponentially over the last year, mostly around adding staff and more computers. So the plan that's outlined here is merely a plan to show that we are eligible for E-rate, which is federal funding that will reimburse us for some of the costs. So some of the costs, we ballpark some numbers in here. None of those are guarantees. What it does mean is that we will end the contract before its due date, which is in October of next year, in order to go out for bid. It doesn't preclude the fact that Focus Connect... It doesn't end the contract? Well, we go out for bid before the thing. The customer, Focus Connect, which is the current contractor here, can become eligible to bid on the contract for the next iteration if they become an E-rate vendor. So that requires some qualifications and some paperwork they'll have to fill out. We have spoken with them about it. It's their intent to fill out the E-rate paperwork and become an eligible contractor to bid on the contract that we posted in May, I believe. Does anybody have any questions about that concept? Andy, I know you do.
In general or specifically about the bidding process?
The bidding process?
I don't have...
Oh, no, no.
But you just mean in general about...
Yeah, in general.
Yeah, so I think Amy's online.
She is?
Yes, okay, Amy. So I guess for either of you, my one question with E-rate stuff would just be, are there any strings attached for us getting embedded with whatever on this one?
Well, the E-rate's been around for a really, really long time. I can't, nothing is ever a guarantee that E-rate will continue. It's just been a subsidy program for schools and libraries for, gosh, 20-plus years. There's no strings attached. You do have to follow the usual government red tape as far as following their procurement process, filing the right paperwork. We'll probably need to report more on our filtering than we do currently. That would probably be the only strings attached is ensuring that we're filtering within our children's department, which we already are. So I don't really see much change for us. It's a little bit more paperwork, but overall, I think it's worth it. We've hired a consultant to help us with filing all that paperwork because that's, that's always been the rub is it's been, they make it very difficult to apply for E-rate. But now there are consultants that do that for you. So for a small fee, through the Marmot Library Consortium, we've hired a consultant who will do all the paperwork for us and walk me through the procurement process to get, to become E-rate eligible and to get those reimbursements.
And it looks like what we're hoping to get here ultimately is on the order of 100-ish grand a year. So I think the number in the memo was 600 grand over five years, so...
Yeah, that's, that's guesstimate, best guesstimate. There are three different categories that you can apply for. Internet access, which is our internet connection. There is network infrastructure. And then there's also managed service provider. And it's all based on a formula. And estimating roughly around 100,000 a year. And, and it's on a five-year cycle and the five-year cycle starts in '26. So we're hitting it at a really good time.
And the filtering you mentioned, we're not mandated us to filter anything outside of the children's section, I think, so that's right?
I can't promise that, Andy. I don't know without digging a little bit deeper. My recollection, just from investigating E-rate 10 years ago, was that it was in the children's department. I don't know what laws have changed since then, but I will become intimately aware of all of the laws as soon as the government reopens.
So there is a Colorado, the Colorado Internet Protection Act, Children's Internet Protection Act is what we have to follow currently and have done so for more than that. And the federal laws are most... The reporting requirements are...
What are you looking for from us?
Just your knowledge that we're moving forward, unless you have reservations. I also would prefer you not lock your head in on $100,000. Like with, you know, with a lot of industries, there are basically kind of industries that don't know how much money you pay for IT. We're well within that range currently, even with the high cost that we're paying for Focus Connect. It's not wildly out of market range. And it's possible with another market provider, we may pay more, but it brings the cost... but it brings the cost of equipment to what we're currently paying because we get an E-rate discount. So I just want you to, I don't want you to get, we're certainly saving $100,000 by applying for E-rate. It's probably not. It's not, it's not something you.
It will be. When we go out for bids on the IT contract, we will ask for only E-rate eligible vendors?
That's correct.
Yes, that's, that's what we have to do. They have to be an E-rate eligible vendor. And I do just want to note that the amount of reimbursements will ebb and flow over that five years, particularly on the network infrastructure side of things. We don't have very old network infrastructure, so we're not going to be going out to purchase any new material. If we grow, obviously, that's when we will be adding more equipment to the fleet. But there is some savings in licensing. So we are on a three-year cycle for our licensing. So that amount will change annually, but we're just giving our best estimate on what we think the savings will be.
Consultant was like 3,000 bucks, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It wasn't expensive. The, I guess, one thing is I think it'd be helpful is, you know, the recurring software expenses. That's not like computers and infrastructure. I think we should like separate above budget. You know, keep, keep track of it separately because, you know, I don't know. It seems like a lot of money is spent on computers and stuff, but I guess 160 of it is software. So then it's 800 bucks. So it's 620,000, 40,000 in computers. And that includes the floor computers and includes like printers, like the printers and that we.
No, it includes computers, laptops, desktop PCs. Those are the, the devices that are supported by Focus Connect. The, my library IT team supports printers and other devices. It's the, it's the PCs and the laptops.
How much are we paying per computer? Per laptop computer for like a staff member?
$140 a month.
For management?
$1,500, $1,200, $1,500 a year.
That's for the managed services, so I can tell you.
Yeah. Yeah, and that doesn't include the cost of a like individual computer.
Correct. That's the support. That pays for the support.
Yeah.
So again, I know it sounds like a big number. And I'd like you not to get too ahead of the big number. Because the big number is not far off from what you pay for managed services.
Right.
We could have staff who do some of the work. The cost of staff is also quite expensive. So the costs are exponentially higher than $140. Not if we have other support staff. That's the amount we pay to the vendor.
The vendor, yeah.
And, you know, going into a budget cycle, which is not, really, you know, Amy and I have talked about this. We did maybe make some, you know, decisions around that contract, which in retrospect, we'll like to have back. It was a price for a computer, no matter how often that computer is used. So when we buy computers for programs that are used on the internet, we still pay $140. That's where we probably.
I guess, but, you know, besides rebidding, you know, if there's anything in, I guess you'll look at the scope to say, and maybe volume discounts or, you know, because, you know, are they doing $60,000, $55,000, $45,000 of work a month? And relative, the vendor, you know, relative to the, the infrastructure. You know, are there ways to say, when I know we're reducing computers, there are ways to do it without having to take computers away or that kind of stuff.
We're not taking away from staff.
No, yeah, I figure that.
We're reducing the number that are intermittent use. I want to say more rare than often.
Yeah, okay.
And it sounded like part of the discussion of bidding this will also be, is it work we want to bring in-house?
We're gonna look at some of that. So like obviously, if we bring work in-house, that's not eligible for E-rate reimbursement. Managed services, like if Focus Connect were an eligible E-rate vendor, we need to get a percentage of that money back. So that, that's really the cost mixers is pricing one against the other. This is about a managed service company. There's, there's good reason why a lot of, a lot of large and small companies manage IT services. It's not just the cost of $100,000 to have staff here at the job, doing it every day, vacancies, turnover.
So, yeah, I guess when you, when will you come back to the board with something?
Well, we're going out for.
Next summer?
Yeah. Amy, we're gonna continue. Andy's gonna continue. We're gonna look at how, what the price of bringing some house will be. Because we promised that we would. I'm sorry, by next year's budget, we'll have a plan and what is, what is costing, you know, fact.
Yeah. 3.7% of our budget around there. So that's within the norm.
Number of costs includes Amy's team, whatever you allow.
Yeah.
For a library, that cost is usually somewhere between 8 and 15%.
Okay.
And we're in the middle of that range. So I don't imagine we're gonna go a whole lot lower, but we're gonna do our best.
I just want to add a correction. When you asked me, what is it support? In addition to the desktops and the laptops, they also support 26 servers. 18 of those are, are servers. Eight of those are virtual machines. So in total, it's 353 devices that Focus Connect supports at this time.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, if you recall, and I know you do, Amy and other board members, like we put together the, with the staff and Focus Connect put together the IT system within like two months. So, and that included buying close to $800,000 of equipment, ripping out everything in the library, putting in new stuff, door scanners, everything was like had to be redone. So I think they did a great job doing that so quickly. Andy wasn't even on the board then and came in and worked on over the holidays. So, so I don't, I don't begrudge them. I think the decision we made then was good, but, you know, we gotta tighten, tighten our budget though. Okay. Anything else on that?
Doug?
Yes?
Is the door open by chief?
There's a lot of noise outside.
And it's somehow broadcasting pretty well online.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. I was having a hard time hearing too. Party out there. There was a program that ended. I think it was on housing or lack thereof. The operating budget.
Yeah, so we published it two weeks ago. It is the budget that we've been working on for the last eight months. There is an explanation here explaining some of the shortfall that we see in 2025. And Jennifer and I are happy to take any questions or recommendations that you may have around the budget. Obviously, there are some, some of the changes that we, where we left at the end of the September meeting, I think we had $200,000 in surplus. Minimumly invested in capital costs, and by minimumly, I mean, at that point, we were probably around 3% or 4%. Now, we see in the final budget after we did the reconciliation in 2025, revenues is $19,000 in surplus and slightly over 1% in capital. So. I know I've had conversations with Amy individually. We need to get out our pencil sharpeners. But I'm looking, I think Karen said it last meeting, clearly like what's the number? And I, I don't have that magic number for you. I want to know.
I can start from the board's perspective or if anybody wants, wants to jump in. You want me to go? Anybody? Any problem with that? Okay. Patina? Okay. So we have a plan to, you know, we have how many buildings? Six buildings? And, you know, I think that the current budget as it's written, you know, will drastically impair our ability, our ability to maintain these buildings. And also, the board has a plan in 2029 when the lease for, for Meadows expires. We were hoping to have money to invest in a property either through lease or through purchase that would replace the Meadows building. Currently, we've reserved 2.5 million dollars for that. You know, we spent, how, how much did we spend on Gun Barrel, just the renovations? Two million? And that includes equipment though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so to outfit the library in Gun Barrel, it costs about $2 million. We're looking at a 30,000 to 50,000 square foot building, which is, I think will be close to three times the size. Putting Carnegie into it. And I think that the current budget, the way with $19,000, we need, we need to, we need to free up funds, at least I think a million a year to maintain our capital maintenance of these buildings and maintain our capital commitment to, this is mine, to Meadows. And so I would hope for November 19th that you come back with at least, for me, at least a million in savings. That's, you know, I think that's.
I think a million is the number I would want to see by next year. I don't know that we have to realize it all in one year, but obviously, the more we do now, the less pain there is down the road. Maybe we get lucky. Maybe suddenly property values go back up again. But let's not assume that they will. They couldn't back go down further. In which case, I think, I mean, I do, Doug, that we basically have $20,000 of headroom in this budget, which, and we don't even have the final numbers for insurance yet. We could easily be in the red with the insurance, as the budget has written. So I think we're gonna have to find additional cuts in here somewhere. Not both to Doug's point of, we're not anywhere close to where we need to be to continue to maintain buildings post Meadows. And also, I just think we're running way too close to the margin right now with all the unknowns going into next year. I would say half million is the number I'm looking for. Morris wanted to.
Yeah, I heard Andy. I had half million in the menu. So you said we don't have the final numbers yet on the insurance?
We don't, but they're better than the original projection.
Okay, so it's come down a bit, okay.
We were gonna, I mean, it's slightly over what we budgeted, but I don't, I don't, I mean, we might have to get it. I'm not gonna be able to get it.
Okay, so it's not like it's gonna come back next month and be another.
No, we are projecting, Jennifer projected 10, we're gonna be at the house.
Okay.
We don't have the liability insurance number, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, for all reasons, Andy and Doug have said it, I don't, I don't like the idea of having a budget that's that close to the line. And I, especially with the capital concerns. I think every time we bring up the capital concerns, it raises the questions and concerns and issues that we talk about every time about the fact that we don't own the buildings.
Yeah, thanks, Kara. That's exactly what I wanted to bring up.
So it's, it's always just, as soon as that subject comes up, it's like this flag goes up in my head. It's like, we're, you know, we're very concerned about me taking these buildings. We don't own them, so we can't, you know, they're not an asset for us. That makes it more difficult. I think it's front of mind for everybody, we'll do what we can do about it, but that's just on the table.
It seems to me, again, just to, just to clarify one thing. We still have the money in the reserve?
Correct.
The 2.5 million dollars in reserve, is that not in this, but you?
I think you put in 3.1.
So what's that?
It's 3.1 million dollars and yes, it is all still there.
It's all still there, okay. It just seems to me, Kara, that, to your point, Kara, that this, you know, all, here we are, we're gonna have this issue. We're gonna cut money out of this. Our big costs are always gonna be this deferred maintenance stuff. That maybe this becomes the year, as the city's figuring out its own fiscal stuff is a mess, that we start the process on speeding up the transfer of the buildings.
We did talk.
I know that's another conversation for another time, but I just wanted to.
We were confident next year with that, so. So, do you have any?
Yes, thank you. And I'm so sorry, David, I could, I didn't quite hear you. Do we know the actual percentage on the insurance at this point?
The health insurance, no, we do. Health insurance, no. Well, we have a ballpark. We have a ballpark and it's just over 10. So, but we don't know, that's our final numbers. I mean, we got the cost back from a number of different places. I'm not inclined to switch insurance companies this year. Promising us lower prices that last for a year. It's not bad, except for, so. We're looking at a slight increase over what we had budgeted. No, but the, the, the number that Jennifer mentioned is we don't have the numbers yet on our liability insurance. Insurance sets for, for employees.
Thank you.
Did you put in here 18% increase in health insurance or?
That's the original projection for it.
Okay. But is that within the budget or did you?
No, I put 10.
So again, if it's above 10?
Yeah.
It's not 18 anymore. It's above 10, just above 10.
Tell them, tell them to get it down more. So, yeah, I mean, we need to look around for pennies. I mean, this is why it's so, do we feel like we understand, have an understanding with the county on their fees and, and the assessment rates? And I know we just got this memo from, from Kim about next year. Is it, can we start those conversations about what that makes, what that does for our budget? Because I think, Kim, this changes the assessment rate for this year, right? It's, it's a little higher, right?
It is, it is a little higher, Doug, and then it'll probably go up a little bit next year. But, but you don't really know what that means until you know what the, the actual value is of all the property in the district. So.
Back to end of November or December? Okay.
December 10th.
I mean, I feel like for the $317,000 we pay the county to help us with that, like, they should.
What is it you want to know?
I want to know the exact number. That's what I want to know. So, but like, it seems like in the history of the world, like, we have lots of bean counters that can give, I, I just, it makes no sense to me, but.
So Adriana, she's here. She's our finance director. She's met with the county and the county treasurer and the assessor to try to get some information so that we have a better way to predict these costs.
Yeah.
So we have, you know.
How, how do they know how much we put into our account? That's what I, like, they have to have a calculation for that, right?
They base it off of actual receipts.
So they take the receipts?
They take the actual receipts of collected money, right? And so it's not a matter of, there's no guarantee of collecting taxes.
Okay.
I'm sure you pay your taxes on time. And many people probably have it tied to their mortgage and that kind of stuff. But it's not, it's not, it's not by any means guaranteed. A number of challenges that occurred last year were higher than ever. And then there's always, even, you know, people die, people move away, whatever, the house, the building sits vacant. There's reasons why not all of 21.6 million dollars gets collected.
Right.
And so I think we just have.
And if it gets collected in the future, then we'll get that money, but you don't know when.
Yeah, yeah, they have to do whatever.
Yeah.
This is a more conservative estimate of how much property tax we expect to bring in than the one I mentioned for this year?
Yes.
And I know Adriana has worked on some of this as well, that, I mean, I think we are working to kind of sketch out our model to better understand what the model here is for how we do these predictions. And I think we can present that to the board at a later date, but it's just a model.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it can be wrong. So I think we're erring on the side of being a conservative model because we'd rather have extra money and run out of money. But obviously, we're still on the line to see some exactly how you get from all the checks. Someone else, the assessor, to be a member of the library actually collects, you know.
Yeah, I'm guessing they have some register, so sheet or some access database that just adds up all of the 200, $100 library district taxes across the 58 million, 58,000 properties and that gets pumped in. And then that, that's so different than what they give us. I guess, I mean, my thing is like, because we're dealing with like tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars that make a real difference, I, you know, I really want to know with as much, and maybe as we get, you know, better, we'll get there. Go ahead, Patina.
So, under purchased services, um, can you speak a bit about other services, just because that's such a large amount, and it's various services for other departments? I just wanna remember and understand what's in that.
Yes, I'll have to look.
Do they purchase services?
Yeah.
There's, it's just called other services?
We're talking like ten, ten things and then other kind of uh, services, the majority of the money that's budgeted is for these projects, but um, little uh, agreements that we have, and I can look it up, if you give me a few minutes, about what those are specifically uh, roll up into this line.
So it's roughly, if I can ballpark it, it's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for the webpage and the updated calendar, there's another hundred thousand dollars approximately for uh, data analysis, data analysis, consulting consultation, um, there's another uh, contingent amount of money, which is probably in the wheelhouse of about fifty thousand dollars to offset uh, security issues, should we experience something with the new plan, um, what are we at, we're at three fifty?
It's most of it.
That's, that's gotta be most of it.
No, I think, I mean, those are important elements, I just wonder if you might wanna spell out, I mean, because, you know, that website, webpage communications, that piece of it, I don't know if it fits anywhere else, but maybe it is just a standalone purchased services of two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna try to bring all those things down, like, the two big workplanning things next year are the webpage and the strategic plan. We are working on a new strategic plan, and we're building a new webpage after ten years. Um, we budgeted for them, I hope, I hope we save money, um, but the total amount of money there is not gonna offset your uh, expectations. Bringing out the budget much, I mean, like, so.
Well, I just wanna know what it is, just because other services just doesn't quite define it, and so I just think spelling it out clearly helps people understand what that is.
Um, so we heard numbers of half to a million, anyone else have any, like, wanna hear more, less? I will say for my personal thing is, I'd like to also do this with maintaining our staffing levels, maintaining our benefits, maintaining, you know, the things that we talked about, raises and things like that, um, so that's an impossible task, I know. Um, I know we, we, we thought we were doing really good with the security contract and trying to bring that into line with, you know, reality, I think, um, but, you know, that got eaten up, and so, um, that's why I'm hitting you hard, Amy, on the IT thing, um, you know, any, 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 any savings, like, I'm searching couch cushions, so, um.
We are doing savings.
Yeah, so, um, books.
But I know, I know, I know I'm important for you to say that right now.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's also important for me to come back and say, like, we know what things cost, we do know what things cost, right?
Right.
Sixty, currently sixty-four percent of all money we spend is on staff and benefits. Whatever money we cut, if you're saying it's a million, I can almost guarantee you that around sixty-four percent of that is staff. You know, as well as I know, that it costs about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run the branch, we're not gonna open a branch on Thursday, close branch, right? So, but there's not a way to do this, there's not a way to do half a million without some staffing reductions, and so, like, I think, I, I don't, I don't want you to sit here and tell me you wanna cut a million dollars, but you wanna leave staff and benefits and everything intact, because I have to tell you that's not possible, right? So, you can change your.
Sure.
But like, the reality is, whatever number you come up with, uh, you're talking about sixty percent of that money staff.
Yeah, and I think that's fair, I mean, the problem we have here is, the budget's down a quarter million dollars from where it was a year ago, at the same time expenses are up somewhat significantly from where they were a year ago, so we are underwater from that perspective, and I think to do the point, we're not gonna fix that without some staff cuts in specific places.
Answer your question, other services include background checks for both volunteers and employees, when we hire employees and stuff like.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Plant care for all the plants in the public areas, first aid kits for all the libraries, the fish tank and children's, um, advertising, opening positions, those are sort of things, and would you like those listed, is that?
No, just the biggest chunk, like, it's two hundred and fifty.
The website.
Yeah.
The website's actually under the professional services, though, so it's not part of that deferred, is that correct?
But we have um, the consultant, any consultant help we get for the strategic line and the data analysis there, under, under other services, and that's the majority of that money, plus some fifty K for, in case we need to reinstate some security.
Yeah, I also want to, because it's a theme on there, but, you know, the House and the, the um, General Assembly have passed two property tax related measures in the two, in three, eight, nine, four, and that's, you know, the reason we're seeing a reduction, like, that's part of it, you know, and uh, and so, that changed assessment rates and changed, um, uh, it gave homestead exemptions and, uh, and decreased property taxes in the state of Colorado by over a billion dollars.
Yeah.
So, that's, and so, when we, when we're flat, if we have flat revenue or slightly down revenue, we have inflation that goes through all these things, computer systems, wages and, and all of that, and that, um, so that's a negative, so it's really, that's a headwind, because I have to beat inflation with property tax returns, uh, and so that's how the system works, and the top number here you see is all the money, well, besides the foundation that donates um, a portion of their charitable givings to us, is all we get, so, yeah.
And as we're talking about.
So.
This is the inflation.
What's in professional development?
Uh, it's for training, um, memberships, a lot of things.
Conferences.
Do you?
Hi, I, I believe in, I believe it's a good investment, right? The, uh, next year, there, um, it does seem like a lot, that was the intent of the board when it formed, we had operated with very little money, uh, for a long time on staff development, we've basically not turned people away from going to conferences and workshops and getting exercises, uh, for the past few years, I think it's been investment, next year, we're investing in two things, uh, again, like, the EDI team has a budget uh, associated with that for, for our news and training, uh, it's idea, idea team, um, and then the other is on leadership, so we're gonna start a leadership program in twenty twenty-six, um, that also has a budget associated with it.
Is there an amount per person, and do you have to qualify, or how do you, like, can anyone do anything?
Uh, everyone can apply for a conference, and as long as their supervisors support them in that, uh, application, it goes to a review and HR and.
But there's no cap?
Um, a no cap on how much they get spent? Um, well, no, I guess not, right, we have sent staff as far away as India, um, uh, for JLF conference, um, that's pretty unusual, but, that's it, that's probably the most expensive one.
Have we done that before?
Uh, last year.
Yeah.
Me too.
Doug?
Almost under twenty, twenty percent less than professional development.
Good.
We are adding some new programs, so like, leadership, so we just don't know how much of that will actually spend, but it hasn't changed our thought of.
Good, Tom.
Um, I, um, looking at all this and listening to this, um, I think it's probably unrealistic that we're gonna get a million bucks out of this, and so I, I'm more comfortable trying to figure how we squeeze half a million dollars out of that, and I would like, um, David, for you to take a look at the outside contracts, professional, the, uh, the, uh, the planning strategy, things that, what are the things that are in the budget right now that there's an idea we're gonna bring in, an outside firm to do versus what we can draw from the staff expertise, um, to do it in-house, and see how much we can save that way. Clearly, we've got really good organizers on our staff.
Okay, um, when you come back, are you gonna have the nice presentation with the?
Blood full thing, yeah.
Yeah, with the bar chart?
I don't know if it'll be nice.
I found three million dollars under the couch.
Oh, the one with the like, it's the, the, the pie charts?
Yeah, in November, we'll do that, um.
And we have a public.
For the public hearing, if you want to.
Yeah, and, I mean, so I appreciate the input, um, I'm the one that's been saying we're fine for the last four months, every time I say we're fine, but it's serious, something more serious happens, the last time I said we're fine, but it's serious, federal government shut down on Monday, the county announced that they're seeing a thirty to forty million dollar shortfall in the next four years, they have better access to the data than we do, I don't think they're projecting increases in twenty twenty-eight, or maybe twenty thirty, right? And so, we are not fine, and it is serious, and we have to make adjustments, I will bring you back what I think is reasonable, if you feel like adding things, I'm, I'm, I'll make it so you can add things back, yeah, right, I, if that's your prerogative, I, I think you should avail yourself of it, but I, but I honestly, it is way more serious, federal government's been shut down for now, was it four weeks?
Three.
Um, three weeks, um, there aren't any positive signs in the economy, and that is disturbing, um, so, I'll bring you back something, and you can take a look, and I can choose.
Thank you, it's tough, it's tough.
Okay, um.
Good news, director updates.
Well, uh, director update, yeah.
Yeah, the big news is Gun Barrel opens on Thursday, uh, I think the collection will open up.
I'm gonna go then.
Courier will start running, I think, Friday morning, um, Saturday's a big party, I'll be there, I'm gonna be in a dump tank on stilts. I won't be, but I, there's gonna be a lot of festivities, I can't even remember what all it is, I think there's bands, there's food trucks, there's jugglers, a banjo player, there's all kinds of stuff.
Are you gonna be on stilts?
No.
Or the dump tank?
Fair or in July, I'll return.
You're welcome to the dunk, day of the field.
No, I hope you'll come, um, the, the, the last, the last really big unknown is the liability insurance, I think in the next two weeks, um, and that's IMA, we hired the, that's all that, then I'm sure we'll have some new bids, uh, than we had last time, if you remember the last time, we had very minimal bids on a lot of the different things, because we were a brand new entity, we didn't have a lot of data for them to look at, now that I assume yesterday, I've already been, we've already been notified that there are.
Yeah, 'cause, do we have any claims against the liability insurance? Yeah, it was, I, I can't remember what our, like, our self-injured deposit, or whatever, the deductible, is it fifty thousand?
Core deductible?
Yeah.
They probably.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be willing to up that a little bit, you know, if it gets a slower raise, then.
Yeah, maximum we can ensure, because towards like, five million, and I think our budget's more, I think we, I think, I think we just need to take it up to a million, if this building floods, first damage, fire, we can't replace it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't own it.
And then we're in here, well, but we're responsible for the insurance.
Yeah, we have the insurance, we just haven't kind of checked it, and then, um, but yeah, like, uh, yeah, if they're, yeah, I don't think it's gonna save you a tremendous amount of money, but that'd be good to hear, I don't think we have any claims, I think we should point that out.
Yeah, we will.
Um.
Well, we won't get that a lot, I think, budget, but, yeah, a lot, a lot of better price. That's the end of my report.
Okay, um, Chris?
Yeah? All right, I'll just stand. Uh, hey everybody, Chris Barge, Executive Director of Boulder Library Foundation, um, just a few updates here, since last your board met, we had a big gala, and it was um, a big success, we were able to clear after expenses a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, uh. Welcome towards, uh, towards the annual grant request, um, for, for next year, um, so we're excited about that, speaking of the gala, uh, it was recorded, those of you who are there, you know, know it's the Radio Book Club with Arsene Maeve, and that would be, uh, you can hear it on KGNU this Thursday at nine AM, so relive some of the magic, this Thursday at nine AM, eighty-eight point five FM, uh, there's also, brand new, uh, thanks to the, uh, the library staff that put this together, um, we have a new endowment, the Jola Camera, the Deanna and Jola Camera Endowment, some of you remember all the years that Jennifer and Deanna, uh, came, they were big time patrons in the Canyon Theater, uh, when she passed several years ago, they endowed, uh, fun, and, uh, it, it's now funding a new concert series, uh, which will kick off November first, and there'll be four, uh, children's music shows, and I'll pass this wire around on November first, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth, all Saturdays, um, and so, come and, come and check one of those out, um, and then, there was one more thing I was gonna, oh yeah, um, there's gonna be, uh, an expert webinar, uh, hosted by myself and our board president, Kitty Kiefer, they're calling it Expert Webinar, uh, it's a, it was both one of the top five talks at the International Public Library Fundraising Conference in, in San Diego in June, and, uh, and so, 'cause of that, throughout the year, they're, they're, they're doing the conference and review, and we're gonna be up, I'll send the link around, uh, and I'm, uh, I don't have the date right now, but I'll, I'll send the link around, if you want RSVP to it, but Library Foundations, uh, cross-country meeting, and this is the story of the, the Boulder Library Foundation's, uh, second life cycle, I'm kicking that off, and, uh, everything we've been building, the foundation of the new foundation, uh, after about seventeen years of fundraising dormancy, and now we're well on the way to being able to raise and give away, uh, a million dollars or more every year, so, that's my update.
Thank you. I think everybody was there, except for, unfortunately, Sylvia had to be in trial or something, um, I think, yeah, hopefully you can get to like, a quarter million pretty quickly there, that, I know you'll say I need to give more money, but, um, maybe Andy, but, uh, like, I'd like, I'd like to get still like a quarter million of that thing sometime, so, that's my challenge, I know, surprising you.
You and me both, thank you for everyone who supported that, both in terms of donations and sponsoring tables, and, uh, there's, couldn't, couldn't pull it off without the staff as well.
Yeah, a lot of volunteers.
And the volunteers, goodness, forty-five volunteers.
Yeah. Um, okay, trustee matters, uh. All right, the, the meeting schedule is in here, and the dates, I realize, were wrong, so, um, they're off by a day, obviously, the twenty-first, the eighteenth, and the sixteenth, um, and probably have to look at twenty twenty-seven to make sure that one's wrong, um.
I think the March date, I don't know if I'm, I think that's the ESD spring break.
Oh, next year, yeah, we'll, 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 I haven't got that far out.
Okay.
So, I'm just looking at like, the next.
The next year, right.
Three months, so.
Right, just saying for March.
Yeah, so, um, you know, for the end of the year, um, we have the budget hearing next week, uh, our next, next month, and then we have, uh, December, we need to, to, um, there's, you know, approve the mill levy, which doesn't take that long, uh, we need to, um, uh, finalize David's evaluation for the end of the year, and, um, I think the board said they wanted a say on his pay raise, um, because he was given what the, what the staff got, and so, uh, maybe he will this year, I don't know, but, like, uh, but the board wanted a say on that, um, and so, um, that puts us, so, I guess. And so, that puts us, so, I guess the other piece that we have to talk about is, you know, when will we bring up and talk about our union folks here and, and the proposal that they put together? I mean, do we feel like we want to do a special meeting? Or, like, it's gonna be hard with the holidays, so I don't think we could do a special meeting in December, or in November, or in January. Or do people think we can handle this during the regular meeting? In terms of discussing our negotiation strategies and all that stuff, what, what do people feel like?
I mean, I think we're gonna need a discussion today.
Okay.
I don't, I just, we have a lot of stuff.
Because we'll have to respond to this, is that correct?
Well, I think that that's what they want.
Yeah.
I mean, yes.
We didn't discuss at all.
We haven't discussed it at all yet.
And I need to establish a committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about having like a subcommittee, right?
Do, do we wanna put that together now, like, this, we can have a committee of two people that, um, that discuss it, I'm happy to be one of the people, or somebody else really feels strongly about it. Don't want everybody to raise their hand at once.
I'd be, I'd be open to it, Doug.
I think that'd be good, Tom, I think that'd be good.
Are you back in town?
I, I will be back next week, I get back next Monday or Tuesday, and then I'm back.
Okay, and, so let me look at my calendar. So, we normally run these on a Tuesday, today's the twenty-first. The, the fourth is Election Day, we probably don't wanna have a special meeting on the election day. The next is the eleventh, Veterans Day, I think it's that. Is the library open on that Sunday? You guys are close.
Yeah, it's on to the holiday.
So, then, the next is Thanksgiving. So, I think the, the next would be December second. I know we don't have to always do it on the Tuesday, but it's a little easier on Tuesday since we're kind of used to that rhythm. So.
I would say we're not gonna be till December second. I would expect the subcommittee to start meeting before that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So, I think the subcommittee will, what do you think they should do, like, be empowered to, we should talk about this, so. So, let's set the meeting for December second. We will probably have an interview session tonight. And then, and then, I think, you know. And let's just set the meeting for December second. Do you have to move on that? I don't think so. Anybody?
Benita and I will also plan to have five in November, some meeting recommendations on legal counsel.
Is it eighteen, I think, yes.
Sorry, yes, it is.
Yeah. Don't make those days, you gotta add a day. I don't know what I was doing. Okay, so, we'll have a meeting on the second. I guess the, the sub.
To be clear, that's a meeting that we're gonna just focus on the, what we're gonna do to, in response to their proposal.
Yeah.
The subcommittee will use November to convene and come up with recommendations for that meeting.
Yes. We, I mean, we could also give an update on the eighteenth, the subcommittee, if we're ready, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, I think that would be okay. The subcommittee, I would say, would should be empowered to, to reach out to the organizers and talk with them, answer questions or ask questions, if anybody has any issues with us doing that.
No, I have no issue.
And obviously, we can't commit the board, we're not, that's far.
I think I'd like to just see a little more structure in terms of.
How much time left on the timer?
I think that was one. I think you might be on.
Somebody show me.
Somebody, Kim or Tom? Kim or Tom are here, you're Lexit. For dinner, go ahead.
Well, just a little more structure in terms of the topics discussed and what's shared, and just some documentation on these conversations too.
Yeah, I think that's probably reasonable, that's my, my opinion, give you notes and summaries, so that, we can send that via email, I think. Or I can post it, actually, I can post it in the, post a link to it in the trustee folder on, that way, only the trustees can review it on the governance. We'll, we'll create a new folder in our rarely-used Teams, the place, and then we can store meeting minutes in there and all that stuff of the, of the committee. I think that's probably good. I thought, you know, I think we still need to understand the Prop 1 law, that's, you know, that I think we sent around the, the letter, and that was really good, and so. Okay. And then, the other item is board evaluation and director contract, so.
Go ahead.
Before, so the subcommittee is you and I, that's it?
You and me.
Okay.
Yeah, so you get back next.
Okay.
And Andy and Benita are gonna, their interview, are gonna interview legal counsel, I saw that note, and I liked Curtis' rate, so, gotta beat that. So, let's see. Board evaluation and director's contract, Sylvia, do you have enough to go on that?
Benita and I are finalizing a date for us to meet, we haven't, we haven't done that since, since we talked last week, so that's the next step. And then we will bring a recommendation back to the board, probably at the November meeting.
Kara, has, do you have the goals that we summarized from the retreat? Kara, can you send those to Sylvia?
Yeah, send them to you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll find them and I'll forward them to you, Sylvia and Benita. Those are the goals that the board agreed on for David. My personal opinion is, is that we take the goals from the contract and just have that, so we don't have to rewrite the contract and re-sign it every December or whatever, because that does have a, a automatic renewal clause. Whether we wanna start that again in December, I think that's fine. But then, I mean, frankly, if David isn't performing to the, to the goals, we can just have a conversation about that and make a decision about it. I expect you to, David, I know you're right here, I'm talking to you about that, but, but, and that sounds harsh, but it, I mean, that's the reality of it. So, anyway, that would be my preference, to take the goals out of the contract and just put them in a separate, like, here, maybe a letter from the board, here's what we expect for you in twenty twenty-six, and we might wanna add another one, is deliver on the, you know, budget. That might be another one we might consider, so.
One of the things that came out of the Felcon Conference that I attended, or one of the things I heard from the state library folks, was the whole issue of a job description and how important that is for every director of every library. And, you know, we danced around that last year, I did some research, and then it went nowhere, and I still think we need to revisit that and have a job description of the director in addition to the contract, because, you know, they argue for the, you know, the stability of an organization that you should have for your executive leader, you know, an actual description. You do not have descriptions, not.
I thought we did, though.
Is that not in the, is the contract not?
It's, it's in the contract, I think what happened last time was, all of the things that we would have put in a job description are in the contract. So, if we do go that route and we develop a, a job description form, we will have to amend the contract, because it does have all of those things in it, in the body of the contract.
Yeah.
I guess, I'll leave it to the governance committee, we need, how much we're gonna pay him, and the finalized contract, or at least close to the finalized contract by the, by the December meeting, regular meeting. And if, if you guys wanna update us, or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm just bringing that up, because I just remember that came up.
Yeah. David, do you have any comments on that? Hope you're okay with it, okay. Sorry to bring that in, and then, like, mid-communication, you know, Benita, do you have any comments about, you said you wanted updates, like, mid, mid, I mean, you'll let you explain.
Oh, this just relates, and I brought it up before, and I bring it up before to see if there's an agreement in doing this, but I think it's important that we hear from David in between meetings, because I just feel, like, now that I'm not on the, the executive committee, I feel, I mean, I just recognize that I get what's in this packet once a month, and there are all these other things that are going on that I think the full board should be aware of, and I'm not asking for an extensive report, I just think some kind of sharing from the director that happens, you know, in between meetings, and whether it's every two weeks, or that two-week period before the next meeting. You know, there was a time we were meeting weekly, and so, that wasn't, you know, the issue, and when I was on the executive committee, I, you know, sort of felt more informed and connected, but I feel like that's not the case, and it shouldn't just be me. But I mean, I think all of us should have the same information and the access to the information and communication from David. So, yeah, that's what I would propose, and I would know that David would say, well, if the majority of the board agrees with this, then we could do this, but if it's just me, then it's just me.
I would agree too, because I don't know either, it sounds like you guys do a lot, and I don't know what it is, thank you.
I think, for me, being the person that's on the executive board with Sylvia, I, I guess, if we could know what you think is important, I mean, I could make up things. I, I would rather go, not have David wax poetically about things, because he does tend to do that, but, but go ahead, Sylvia.
Oh, and I think the problem, I, I think the issue is, how do we do that without having additional meetings that we have to, you know, follow the proper procedures for? So, I think that's part of the reason why it's structured the way that it is, so that we just have the, the few people meeting, so we would just have to figure out how to work around that.
I don't think that impacts meetings, I mean, what I'm asking for is, you know, just a memo from David that is an informational piece that comes in our email, you know, that's shared, that would be shared publicly, like, you know, hey, here's some things that, you know, and maybe just in anticipation of the Gun Barrel event on Saturday, we would have known weeks ago that it was happening on Saturday instead of the week before.
I kind of agree with Doug, that wouldn't it make sense to make this duty of the president instead of David? Because he is meeting with the honor.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel like it should be my responsibility, and I could, if you don't.
I had suggested that too, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I, I was thinking about it more since, you know, so I, 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 I was thinking, like, I would probably give you kind of quick, you know, I hate writing things down, because I'm an attorney, and so, I would probably give you quick bullets, and I'm happy to also, like, have an individual call with people if they have questions about those bullets, or, you know, want more information. And I'm kind of thinking, like, I can do that every, like, the midpoint between, not every week, but the midpoint between meetings. I mean, here, we're, we're meeting a little more frequently, so I think I'll probably do one, you know, next week or something. But, or, or the week after, maybe the Monday after next, because I have, you know, stuff. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think we need to, like, limit it to, like, maybe one between, like, regular meetings, because that's a lot, that, that can become a time-consuming additional obligation for anybody who ever becomes the president. So, I would just say, let's, let's try to pick a regular time, and then just keep it to the one.
Yeah, I mean, I love this place, but I do spend like, ten hours a week doing stuff for this that I don't get paid for, and also, like, it's time away from my family, and, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
I know, but it's important, yeah, it's important that the trustees are informed.
I will totally do it.
We are in the leadership position, and it's just very hard to not be in communication or not receive information about what's going on.
I think it's a fair point.
And I think in terms of cadence, we could shoot for, you know, once a month, but offset between our regular meetings.
I, I would like, you know, to send you guys some great programs that are going on, or, you know, other stuff too, that I.
Well, I think just whatever you can, whatever we.
I mean, normally, we just go over the calendar, that's the biggest thing. But, you know, there may be some more in-depth sort of, you know, haranguing of David that I do on, you know, specific funded items or things like that, I mean, that's, you saw me challenge Chris, so that's kind of stuff. To earn more money, or to donate more money, those are the kinds of things.
I never thought about, thanks for the tip. I look like to blame Sylvia raised. Kim, there's no public meeting issue here, if it's Doug just sending an update to the board and no one's replying to it.
No, no, as long as there's no exchange of communications about it, you're fine.
Well, you can also.
There's a whole nother conversation I wanna have at some point, Kim, about how we figure out how to make the Twenty-First Century work with Colorado's open meeting laws.
We can talk about that.
You wanna, like, do you want us to send you any updates out of, like, subcommittees and library foundations and things?
I mean, I would look, I mean, if you wanna send it, I could pass it on to the board, that'd be helpful. Yeah, I mean, same as you, Chris, if there's anything you wanna highlight to the board, I mean, you're on, on our, you get access to our trustee list, or, no?
No, you shouldn't.
No, okay, I mean, yeah, so, you can send that out, and I'll, I'll send anything about, um.
Yeah, or our liaisons who serve the library foundation.
Yeah, we're, we can always crosswalk our communication.
Yeah, and so, I think that's also as well.
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll send a reminder, Sylvia, be okay, so.
Yeah, I think some triggers.
Um, give me all your info, I, I think it's a fair point, I, I get it, and.
Could this be your monthly newsletter from the president?
Yeah.
Just to be bullets is fine, nothing like, nothing fancy, like, I just saw Gun Barrels opening from the newsletter, and I was like, oh, cool, I'll put that down. I was like, wait, I should have known.
Yeah.
And I felt silly that I didn't know that, but, I was like, did, I missed that you didn't talk about that? And so, I caught it in the newsletter, and then someone at school told me to, and I was like, oh, so just like, things like that.
Yeah, co-pilot, little be drafting that. I think it's a, it's a fair point, and I apologize, you know, we should have.
You can go apologize.
We should have got that better, so.
One of the other things that I asked for was a certificate that we could use for commendation or appreciation, and so, I'd still like that certificate for.
Yes, didn't someone volunteer to work on that?
I, I volunteered to send a copy of one that was an example from another board I'm on, and I, I remember that I pulled it out of a packet, and I saved it, and I don't think I send it to David, I'll do, I will do that this week.
I think it was a staff.
We do have a.
Ask, not a board ask, right?
Well, we, we did, but I thought, I did, I remember Sylvia.
Yeah.
Let's do it, Sylvia.
It's just an example, it certainly, it certainly wouldn't have to be something that's adopted, it's just an example to, to look at.
I thought it was a communications person that was gonna take that on, that's.
She did the letterhead, and the letterhead looks great.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, I mean, I think that's in that scope.
Well, we can have, look at it, yeah, so you get the example, and I'll watch you on it.
Sure. Okay. Right.
Gold, plating. We haven't used the letterhead yet, but maybe we will, to send to somebody a letter. But it's still nice to have in case we need it. Okay, legal, okay, any more trustee matters? I appreciate that, and I'll make the changes on that communication. Trustee matters, or any others, okay. Kim, legal counsel update?
Yeah, nothing more from me, we have published for the public hearing in November, and then you have the. Yeah, nothing more from me, we have published for the public hearing in November, and then you have the memo on the, uh, residential assessment rates, plus an email that I sent this morning, because the state sent something out yesterday afternoon. Uh, and again, it really doesn't mean much until we know what the actual ones are uh, December.
Kim, can you just clarify one thing, your memo for me, because I just don't understand how this works? You have columns in your memo for both Senate Bill twenty-four and, or Senate Bill two thirty-three, House Bill one thousand one. What's the relationship between those two bills, because they have different base?
Yeah. Uh, Senate Bill twenty-twenty, the the twenty-four one is the base year under the two subsequent bills. For you, it doesn't make any difference, because you, you know, we started the the district so recently that that calculation is just your normal, whatever you had that first time around. Um, so that column doesn't affect you, but I pulled that out of the state's website. Um, and then, um, the other two bills, the first one was adopted and it was amended by the E. Uh, and those will cause changes in the assessment ratio at least through twenty, into twenty twenty-seven. And those changes are dependent upon, as you can see on the charts, whether the increase in actual value is five percent or more than five percent or less than five percent. And again, you won't know that until they finally give us the AV, the actual values. And at that time, um, you'll get the certificate of value that will already have the ratio or the rate, assessment rate incorporated into the formula. So, all it does, give you some information that probably next year you'll have more money, but no way to figure out how much.
Thank you. How is the five percent not just reinstating Tabor? How is this not re-brucing our D-Bruce?
That's exactly what it is, David. And that's what made it so confusing, because when they first, when the legislature first drafted these changes, they amended the original five point five percent to a different number, but then they realized that a lot of us had detabored. So, instead of doing the amendment, they created a whole new statute, so it's a whole new law, and it and it is basically reinstating Tabor. Um, now we could, uh, I believe in next year, um, detabor this statute as well. So we can get rid of that cap. But again, that's what, that's why they're messing with the, uh, assessment ratio, so that they have more control over that, uh, directly. And we'll just have to wait and see what what they're gonna do, it's been very difficult to figure out what's going on and how this is all gonna be calculated. And again, we really won't know until December for sure what it means.
No one wants to get together and sue to declare it unconstitutional?
I would love to, but we've, we've-
We're polishing the budget for litigation?
Well, we could team up with all the other library districts and fire districts that are, and the school districts and the county transportation boards and the, that are all being, um, austerity by this measure.
Yeah.
So it's austerity.
Yeah, it's- I I have little doubt that next year we'll have another statute that we'll have to deal with, that we'll be amending this one, or getting rid of this one and creating something new, but we just have to wait and see.
Yeah. Well, I guess we'll set up polls, right? One more year, okay, yeah. Um, the, uh, it it looks like B or somebody publishes this ABV value, or the property value, they'll tell us whether it's, whether it's increased by five percent or not?
Yeah, yeah, they created a whole new, um, commission that is going to make those determinations. And that, the email that I sent you this morning, that was sent out this morning, um, I don't know if that's the commission's determination, or if that is just what the Division of Local Affairs has put on its website. As soon as I figure that out, I'll send out another email. But at the moment, it didn't say that that came from the commission, but it's different than the the chart that was in the original memo. So, you know, my immediate assumption is that probably is the commission result, but I don't know.
Okay. Um, it, uh, we set the public hearing, all the notices went out and everything?
Yeah, yes.
Um, okay, do, is that the end of your status report?
It is.
Okay. Uh, do the board feel like we need to go into executive session, or you wanna?
I would.
You do, okay. Well, I can make a motion. And the the trustees, okay, so I'll just make a motion, and you guys can vote up or down, what do you think we need to do it? Um, the trustees may upon approval, two-thirds of the trustees in attendance enter into an executive session as allowed by twenty-four six four oh two for B and E, sorry, one. And the Colorado revised statutes for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific questions and determining positions relative to the matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiations concerning Colorado federal labor labor law processes for employee uni- unionization. Um, I made that motion, anyone second it?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, Tom, five, Tom, six, okay. Opposed? One? Okay, um, so the motion carries. So we're gonna go into a second session, so, sorry.